We ask that the applicant keep their presentation to under 10 minutes. They may reserve 2 minutes as a rebuttal. We ask that the public keep their comments to 2 minutes unless they have previously requested in writing for 5 minutes as a representative of a group or organization. Pursuant to the provision of Section 2.68.030 of the Metropolitan Code of Laws, notice is hereby given that a final hearing before this commission is appealable to the Chancery Court of Davidson County or the Circuit Court of Davidson County vis statutory writ of certiorari. You are advised to seek your own independent legal counsel to ensure that your appeal is filed in a timely manner and that all procedural requirements are met. You should also seek independent legal advice regarding the applicability of the writ of certiorari to the specific decision of the Historic Zoning Commission. So I just wanted to say again, we just for public is that we welcome everyone to January 18, 2023 Metro Historic Zoning Commission meeting. And our first on the agenda is the adoption of minutes for December 21, 2022. I address that to the commissioners. Any questions or is there a motion? Robin, did you hear? Council member has a motion to approve. There's a second by Commissioner Mosley. All in favor? And that motion passes for approval of the minutes. Adoption of agenda. Ms. Eegler?
Yes, we have several pieces of information to share with you. 814 Boscoval Street is a request to defer. 2300 White Avenue did not meet the notification requirements. 3707 Westbrook Avenue is on consent and there's a request to remove that. So if you agree, that'll be moved to the end of the agenda. 121 Third Avenue South is a request to defer. 924 Bradford Avenue is notification requirement's not met. And then there's another request to defer for 250 Natchez Trace. So that's items 6, 9, 13, 14, 16 that would be off the agenda and 11 that would be moved from consent to the end.
Robin, can I ask you about number 20?
Oh, yes, and 20, thank you. That is off the agenda, notification requirement's not met.
Okay. Commissioners, that is the provision to the agenda for the day. Are there any questions to that? To approve the agenda?
Move to approve.
Commissioner Price, second. Commissioner Mahal. All in favor? Okay, not opposed, that motion passes. Thank you. I want to acknowledge Councilmember Withers is here, but I believe he would like to wait until that particular agenda is being heard. Thank you, Commissioner, I mean, Councilmember. We always really appreciate you being here.
Okay, the consent agenda, as a notice to the public, the items that remain on the consent agenda will be voted on at a single time. No individual public hearing will be held for each item, nor will the commission debate them unless a member of the audience or a commissioner requests that the item is removed from the consent agenda. We'll read out the name of each case one by one, and if you are in opposition to the project or request it to be discussed, please raise your hand or call out. And items removed from the consent agenda will be heard at the end of the meeting. So the remaining consent agenda items are 1821A and B, Fourth Avenue North, and that is for new construction of outbuildings. 600 McFerrin Avenue, and that is for new construction of an outbuilding. 901 Meridian Street, and that is for new construction of an outbuilding. 1600 Fatherland Street, and that is construction of an addition with a setback determination. 4311 Nebraska Avenue, and that's new construction of an addition. And that's it for the consent agenda. Staff recommends approval of these items on the consent agenda with the applicable conditions in the staff recommendations, finding that the applications meet the respective design guidelines for the overlays.
Thank you, Sean.
Move to approve.
Commissioner Mahal has moved to approve. Sir, second?
Second.
Commissioner Johnson has seconded. All in favor? None opposed, and that motion passes. Thank you.
The first item on the agenda is 132 Second Avenue North. Now, this is an application for a rooftop addition. This building was built circa 1890 and contributes to the historic character of the Second Avenue Historic Preservation Zoning Overlay. The front of the building faces Second Avenue North while the rear faces First. The design guidelines require that rooftop additions be set back 30 feet from Second Avenue and 10 feet from First Avenue. The proposed addition does meet the setback requirements. The design guidelines also limits rooftop additions to a maximum of one story and a maximum of 15 feet of additional height. The applicant is asking for a two-story rooftop addition that will be more than 29 feet above the parapet on Second Avenue. The yellow portion here is the original structure while the blue portion indicates the proposed addition. Due to the slope of the roof, the addition would read as 2 and 1/2 stories from the First Avenue elevation and would add approximately 41 feet of height. In conclusion, staff recommends disapproval of the project, finding that it does not meet Section 3H of the Second Avenue Historic Preservation Zoning Overlay Design Guidelines.
Thank you, Melissa. Any questions from the commissioners? At the moment, thank you. Is applicant here? Please state your name and address.
Hello, yes, Remick Moore with Remick Architecture. Yeah, so first I want to say thank you. As you know, we've been here before and seeked approval for that first rooftop addition. And the owners of the building, as you know, Icon Entertainment, they like to bring unique offerings to Lower Broadway in Nashville. And their desire here is to do something a little different, with the desire to create Second Avenue as being maybe something different than Lower Broad. So the idea behind this proposal is that the additional story would allow more square foot, so that it would not be sort of a honky-tonk bar, it'd be something different, some type of residential offering. And of course, the performer with that requires a little more square footage to make those things work. So that is sort of the genesis of the ask here. So there would, the intention would be to have some residential offering on those three floors. There would be a food and beverage offering, but the idea is that this is not a four-story honky-tonk bar. That performer works great, you know, with the stories that we have. So this, the idea of asking for this additional level is really based on trying to do something a little different, different offering for Second Avenue. We did try to keep within the setbacks and obviously the size of the building is very difficult from floor play and proportion. So this extra square footage would really help the developer, the owner.
Okay, you might want to hold any comments, any further comments, or do you have other comments? Okay, we might have questions for you.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. All right, open public hearing. Anyone here? Okay, closed public hearing. Commissioners?
I will start. I think I do understand applicants' wants, but we, our body is not the body to accommodate every applicant's wants. And to me, it is very clear, the previous plan meet setback mass, height, material. So that was the plan we approved versus this was exceed everything. Only condition they met is front setback. And mass is way too big, height is way too big, materials is not sure. So I think our staff analysis is right on. I am 100% in support of the staff recommendation.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I concur with Commissioner Johnson's analysis of the situation. I'm happy to see this building getting redone and I think it'll be a great addition to Second Avenue. And yeah, I remember years ago, before there was an overlay, there was a building that built some stories on top, you know, a couple of stories. And every time I look at that, I mean, I think that was the impetus behind getting our overlay is to kind of try to keep those, that riverfront view as intact as possible. And so I wish you good luck on the project, but I'll have to concur with staff.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I also agree that this is totally inappropriate, overwhelms the historic building and the historic context, and pretty much a nonstarter for the reasons that have been stated. Ben, do you have any? In that case, I'll make a motion. In the case of 132 Second Avenue North, I move to disapprove the proposed addition in accordance with the staff recommendation.
There's a motion?
Second.
There's a second by Commissioner Johnson. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Not opposed, I see that motion passes. Thank you.
The next case is 1400 Woodland Street. The applicant proposes a rear addition to the contributing building at 1400 Woodland Street. The structure at 1400 Woodland is a circa 1900 two-story commercial building on the corner of Woodland Street and South 14th Street in the Lachlan Springs East End Neighborhood Conservation Zoning Overlay. The original footprint of the building can be seen in the 1914 Sanborn at the bottom of the screen there on the left. The commission approved new side additions to the east side of the building in 1998, and those side additions can be seen on the right-hand side of the screen in the aerial on the interior side of the property. Today, the applicant proposes a one-story rear addition to the contributing building. The proposed one-story form does not exceed the number of stories or height of the historic two-story building, however, the proposed addition extends slightly taller than the existing side addition. Staff finds this meets the design guidelines. The proposed addition is wider than the original two-story massing of the building, but is no wider than the existing side addition, when the existing side addition is considered. Staff finds that the proposed width of the rear addition could meet the design guidelines if the proposed addition had at least a five-foot setback from the interior side property line. The addition meets the base zoning setbacks and the front setback will not change. While the proposed addition meets the base zoning setback of zero feet from the interior side property line, staff finds that the addition should be set back at least five feet from the interior side property line, given the size of the addition. The building appears to already be close to the interior side property line, however, that is only because of the side addition approved in 1989 and is not a historic condition. The historic commercial building that's highlighted in red here was originally an estimated 25 feet from the property line shared with the residential building. Staff is concerned that to further encroach on the property line is not meeting the design guidelines. In addition, the lot is unusually long, which would allow for more depth to the proposed addition. While the applicant shows an inset of at least one foot from the existing rear corner on the east side of the building, the applicant proposes that the addition has no inset from the rear corner on the west side, the South 14th Street side of the addition. Staff finds this lack of inset on the west side appropriate because the addition will have a change of materials to help distinguish the addition from the existing historic building. The addition is only one story, whereas the existing historic building is two stories, further distinguishing the addition from the historic building. The proposed addition has a minimal depth and because the applicant intends to utilize an existing door opening on the rear west corner of the building to access the additions, which will eliminate the need for rear wall demolition here. Because this existing door is so close to the existing west edge of the building, a one-foot inset at the corner would prevent the applicant from using this existing door without excessive reworking of the location of the door and the existing interior stair. The addition's footprint does not more than double the footprint of the historic building. Staff recommends approval of the project with the following conditions. Final material selections for cladding, roofing, trim, porch elements, windows, and doors are reviewed prior to purchase and installation. The rear addition has a setback from the interior side property line by five feet, and the utility meters be located on the side of the building. And with these conditions, staff finds that the proposed addition meets the design guidelines.
Thank you, Joseph.
I'm happy to take questions, and I know the applicant's here as well and would like to speak.
Just one clarification, on that five foot, that's on which side of the, not Woodland, but on the other?
That's on the other, the interior side.
What's the street name on that?
It's not a, it's on the interior side, so the side that's shared with the residential property, so the opposite of the street side.
Good, just clarification, thank you.
I can go back to the side if, so that's on that, where the red box is, it's kind of hard to see on the projector, but I think it's maybe clearer on your screen. So the South 14th Street side is on the bottom, and that five-foot setback would be on the other side, which is shared with the residential property.
Just a quick clarification there, drilling down a little further, they're dimensioning the most rear corner adjacent to the residential currently at 3 feet 11 and 1/2 inches from the property line, so 13 inches or 12 and 1/2 inches sort of clip in the back corner of that building would satisfy the staff, or the recommendations of the staff.
Correct, yeah, we would just, the tightest point would be at least five feet.
Good, yeah, thanks for that, too, Commissioner.
Of course.
Okay, applicant? Is not here?
Hello, again, Remick with Remick Architecture. Yeah, we have nothing more to add, they did a great job of summarizing, thank you for that.
Remick, I've got a quick, way down the details, but a quick question. Might help you from having to come back or, I don't know if, is, are the doors between, on the addition, the doors that exit towards the interior property line, are those for egress or is that, are those convenience stores in terms of getting in and out? And here's, I'll ask the question, and here's why I ask. I don't know if the fire marshal will have any say, if you're five plus feet when you come out close to the existing building and it narrows down to less, and typically they don't, I've seen scenarios where you can't get narrower in the direction of egress out of the building, and whether they might have a comment on that or that is the case to keep you from having to come back here. Would you, if you needed to keep the width the same all the way along that ramp, would you just camp the building and keep the five feet and just sort of get on with it?
Certainly, if that's what we had to do, yes.
I mean, I think from our perspective of looking at it, I don't think it would be a substantive change in the application, it just would be something the staff could approve, but I wouldn't have.
Yeah, we're kind of still working.
Way down in the details, but a lot of times these things come up and certainly wouldn't want to have to go through a whole nother approval if that was something minor that changed.
Yes, sir, thank you. Yeah, we're still kind of working through some of the egress.
Sure.
Yeah, it's not currently an egress.
Okay, any other questions to the applicant? Okay, thank you, Remick.
Thank you.
Open public hearing.
Thank you, Commissioners. I should have been here with you again. Councilmember Brett Withers from District 6. Just want to thank the staff for working so diligently with the architects and with the business owners. This addition actually had been contemplated a while back, and one of the many quirks of our zoning code was that one of the factors that would have prevented this was the parking requirements that we used to have in our urban area. And so this is not the first time that I've seen a business that sought to do a small or modest addition and that was prohibited by parking. So Metro Council recently did remove that parking requirement. Obviously, as you see, most businesses, if they have parking, want to keep as much of it as they can. And this addition sort of is in an area where there is present kind of a rear deck area, and so it is minimal in reduction on the parking, but also I'm really pleased to see that it is a single story, and I think it really enhances the streetscape there along 14th Street really well, rather than sort of just looking like a blank box. It sort of really activates 14th Street in a really nice way. So I think the architects have done a great job and appreciate staff working on that. I know a lot of times we really require some sort of an indenture at the back of the historic building, but in this case, I appreciate staff considering the location of the doorway and the ability to minimize the impact on the rear of the historic structure. So another thing just to say is that 20 years ago, Lipstick Lounge was a great addition, but we used to have lots of noise complaints at that time that they had worked very diligently through, and they have a great relationship with their next-door neighbors now, which I'm grateful to see. One other aspect, which is not something that y'all would review, but that I think is beneficial, is that this isn't enclosed, it does have lots of windows, but it isn't closed. And so sometimes as we have businesses that want to add patio or rooftop spaces in our urban neighborhoods, that leads to a lot of conflict from noise, but I think this does a really nice job of adding a pretty small rear addition that also enhances the 14th Street side pretty well, and I think overall helps to maintain the viability of one of our true historic commercial buildings. So just want to thank staff for their work with the applicants on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Anyone else? Before we close public hearing? Is closed. Okay, Commissioners?
I got to say, I was pleased to see this. I think it's a great project for a really well-loved neighborhood landmark in Lachlan Springs. I appreciate Councilman Withers speaking on behalf of the applicant, and I think the staff did a great job. Thank you, Joseph, and whoever else may have worked on it. And I got to support the staff recommendation, including the five-foot setback off of the neighbor, neighboring property line. I understand, I saw in the public comment that the current neighbors don't have any problem with as proposed, but you know, the next neighbor or next owner of the house may appreciate that extra five feet of space. So I think that's a legitimate ask, considering the size, overall size and massing of what we're considering here. So yeah, I'm in support of this one, good job.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anyone else? Motion?
Motion to approve the application for an addition at 1400 Woodland Street with staff recommendations.
Motion? Second?
Second.
Commissioner Mahal has seconded. All in favor? Okay, not opposed, and that motion passes. Thank you.
All right. This is an application to construct infill in an outbuilding on a vacant lot at 1913 Russell Street. The proposed infill is 1 and 1/2 stories with height and scale that are compatible with the neighboring historic homes. The proposed infill and outbuilding meet all setbacks, and the front setback for the infill is approximately halfway between the houses next door, which meets the guidelines. So here's the front elevation. Staff recommends that the horizontally oriented window on the front wall of the recessed porch be revised so that it has a height-to-width ratio of at least 2 to 1 in order to meet the design guidelines, given its highly visible location on the front facade. Here are the side elevations. The infill includes one dormer on the left side elevation, which meets the design guidelines for inset. The design guidelines does state that dormer should be fully glazed, however, staff finds that in this case, the dormer can be appropriate, given the contemporary design of the infill. In addition, the dormer is located approximately 30 feet beyond the front wall of the house, which helps to lessen its visual impact. Here is the rear elevation. The proposed outbuilding meets all of the design guidelines for outbuildings as well. And here are some context photos. At the top are properties across the street, while the bottom show houses directly to the right of the subject property. And here are some additional photos on the 1900 block of Russell Street. So in conclusion, staff recommends approval with the conditions set forth in the staff recommendation, including the condition that the window on the front wall of the recessed porch be vertically oriented to meet the guidelines. Any questions for me?
Just for public record, just wanted to confirm that the affidavit was received?
Yes, it was.
Wasn't on the recommendation, but just to be sure.
My apologies, yes, it was received pretty early.
Very good, thank you.
All right. Okay, applicant?
My name is Price Harrison, I'm the architect for the project. I'd like to thank Melissa for working with us on this project. And the only thing I wanted to bring up, and just as a point of clarification, is that that horizontal window on the front of the house, the client wanted me to bring this up, that that is actually in the master bath, and so it's intended to be a piece of high glass above the vanities to let in natural light. And it is at the very back of the porch, so if that's a consideration, that's one of the things we would like to seek approval for if possible. We can orient the window horizontally, it would just be a different proposition and would not let light in over the vanity area. So it's really a daylighting technique.
Okay, thank you. Any questions to the applicant? Okay, hold on, we might have more. Thank you. Open public hearing. Close public hearing.
Given, given the contemporary nature of the, you know, aesthetic of this house, certainly I think, scale-wise, it's appropriate as the staff has determined. Really, the horizontal window is the, is the request from the applicant, and I think more appropriate in scenarios like this in terms of just what the modern aesthetic is, but I find it's going to be very difficult in this case to say it works here, but it's not appropriate in others, whether it be on the front or the, near the front sides. We've not permitted that, so in terms of solving the daylighting problem, I think a proportion of a window or some opening that met the needs, but that had a more vertical orientation, I think the staff and the commission would be open to that. But as presented, I get it, but we've not allowed it in other scenarios, and certainly something like this, where the aesthetic didn't match the window opening, we just don't get to make that judgment necessarily, and I think in this case, it's not different enough or unique enough for this application that it reads, where we would not put ourselves in a compromising position. And I think it's pretty clear in terms of the guidelines of the proportion of openings, we've had that determination on previous projects. I know there's a lot of words to lay on the plane, but as it stands, I think it doesn't, in the judgment, I agree with the judgment of the commission, I mean, excuse me, of the staff, in terms of its applicability here.
Thank you, Commissioner. Well explained.
I appreciate Commissioner Mosley's explanation. I think location is the key to me. If the proposed window is back half of the house or a rear portion, but a guideline is pretty clear on that front of the house, so I'm hoping applicant further be able to find amicable solution by working with the staff. But I think we cannot stray from the guideline, so I agree with the staff recommendation.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Given those comments, I'd like to make a motion to approve the staff recommendation.
Given those comments, I'd like to make a motion to approve the staff recommendations for 1913 Russell Street. There's a motion.
A second.
There's a second. All in favor?
Okay.
None opposed? And that motion passes. Thank you.
Next up is 1704 Cedar. This house is an application for an addition. The house dates to circa 1905 and contributes to the Belmont Hillsborough Neighborhood Conservation Zoning Overlay. The pergola that you see over the front porch predates the overlay. The primary issue is that the proposed addition more than doubles the footprint of the historic house. The footprint is currently about 1,291 square feet. So that's the footprint of the historic house, just under 1,300 square feet. And after the addition, it'll be about 3,218 square feet. On this graphic, the original house is in orange and the proposed addition is in blue. The addition steps wider than the historic house, which the guidelines allow when the house is shifted on the lot. This house has shifted slightly, is about two feet closer to the left side property line than the right side. Staff finds that stepping wider could be appropriate here if the addition did also not more than double the footprint. The materials, insets, and fenestrations, all meet, fenestration pattern, all meet the design guidelines. There is a basement-level attached garage, which does meet the design guidelines. So in conclusion, staff recommends disapproval of the proposed addition, finding that it does not meet sections 2B-1B and 2B-2F of the design guidelines for the Belmont Hillsborough Neighborhood Conservation Zoning Overlay for massing. The applicant is here.
Thank you, Melissa. Questions? At the moment, thank you.
My name is Curtis Johnson. I live on 111 Yucca Drive in Imperial, Nebraska. My wife and I are the owners of 1704 Cedar Lane. We currently live in Nebraska and planning to relocate to 1704 Cedar Lane to raise our three kids. A little background, my wife is from Nashville. She grew up in the neighborhood, up on Elmwood, in a historic home. She went to school, grade school, high school, graduated from MTSU, taught elementary at Napier Elementary for six years before moving to Nebraska. So when we decided to move back to Nashville, we knew we wanted to be in the same neighborhood and raise our kids where she did. 1704 Cedar Lane caught our eye because of the historic beauty and character it has. When designing the addition, we had two goals in mind. Number one was preserve the character of the home, the historic character, and create an addition that's functional for our family. The reason for a specific floor plan and design is we tend to live in it and be our forever home. We're not a developer that's trying to push the limits and throw something up to sell. In fact, we purchased it from a developer that had already started a gut to home, and we're thankful we got it before all the character was lost. Design challenges we faced were we wanted to keep the original staircase, the original fireplaces, the historic inlay flooring, and we wanted to try to preserve as much as the rear exterior wall as we could. As you can see in the slide, this would be the upper floor, has one opening. And not seeing the other slide, but in the main floor only has two small openings. So in fact, two of the three openings we made are existing windows, so we just simply have to enlarge the window, so it'd be minimal destruction to the exterior wall. So with these goals in mind, it was necessary to keep the historic four-square layout, enlarge the main floor footprint, reduce the upper floor area. And doing this allowed us to keep the total finished square footage of the addition less than the total finished square footage of the main historic house. So in other words, we did not more than double the total square footage of the home. As to not overwhelm the existing home, we incorporated a combination of things in our design that lowers the perceived scale of the addition. So the two-story portion of our addition is narrower, more narrow than the main historic home, as shown there. Historic home is in blue, addition's in yellow. So doing that, looking at it from a side view, it actually looks smaller than the historic home. Also, in the next slide, we incorporated a one-story form on part of the addition. And then also, we included the basement underneath the home. And that's important, because otherwise, we'd have to put the basement in the, or the garage, instead of being underneath the basement, we would have to put the garage in the backyard, which would take up more of the open space in the backyard and be more unsightly to the neighborhood. We feel the design features that we chose are important in highlighting the historic Our design is compatible in size when comparing some other neighboring homes within just a block radius. Here are just a few homes that have a finished footprint of similar size or larger than what we are proposing. Our finished footprint is 2,635 square feet. And 1706 Cedar is actually right next door, has 2828 square feet. It's typo on 1893, it's 1803 Cedar, and it's 4893. 1800 Cedar is 2,679. 2704 Brightwood is 2,705 square feet. There's a couple on Belmont that are nearing 3,000 or over. So as you can see, it's not anything out of the ordinary to have 2,600 square feet on a finished floor. Staff mentioned the footprint of the addition is more than double the original home. And this is true, but I want to point out that the original footprint, including all of the original front porch, is 1,460 square feet. The finished addition, the finished covered area, adds 1,472 square feet to the footprint. So it's really 12 square feet more than what the original home would be, which is very minimal. The covered patio area attached to the rear home adds 455 square feet. We would be open to detaching the patio, the covered patio off the rear, and placing it further back in the yard in an effort to reduce the footprint of the home. My wife and I feel, though, that having the patio attached and tucked into the rear of the home, it's less visible from the street and makes it more practical than detaching it. But that is an option. We have personally received a couple emails from neighbors with support and excitement about our project. Also, being on a steep hill, it is our priority for a good drainage plan, so runoff isn't affecting the neighbors. We feel our design preserves and highlights the historic home, as well as fitting the needs of our family. Please consider this when making your approval decision. Thank you for your time, and I'm here to answer any questions. Also, I do have some handouts of what the finished footprint would look like after removing the rear patio, if you care to look. Sure. Thank you.
Thank you. You may have questions for you. Open public hearing? Yes, please come forward and give your name and address. And if you are in that group there, please come forward so that we can keep the public hearing moving.
David Epstein, 1715 Cedar Lane. So looking at the plans that I saw, the setback on the right side encroaches on the neighbor's property quite a bit, it appears to. And in our historic district, houses have to sit behind the front house and not go outside that footprint. When you look at houses going down the road and you look at the plans for this house, you're adding what looks like a second house to a first house and totally changes what everybody in our historic district has of the guidelines that we have to follow. So once we go outside that guideline and start allowing somebody encroach on our neighbor's property and have a much wider home, then who's to say that I can't come to my house and start asking for other things and use this as a precedence for why I should enlarge my house? And I just think that we have to stay within certain guidelines. I'm very excited to have, you know, a family with three kids. I have three kids across the street, same age. So it's nothing against, I'm really excited to have this family. Thank you.
Thank you. Also, for public hearing, we've had public comments that I'm sure people have seen on the SharePoint. So anyone else? Wow, we have a lot in our group here, I'm sure. There's nobody else that's going to be speaking on this, on 1704 Cedar Lane? Okay? Oh, yeah, that's right. Right, right. Okay. Close public hearing?
It is pretty clear to me, from the staff analysis and the data provided to us, that this addition is too large. It more than doubles the original square footage of the historic home. And as the neighbor, Mr. Epstein, just presented, encroaches on the neighbor in a way that I don't think the design guidelines intend. So I support the conclusion of the staff recommendation.
Okay, Commissioner, thank you. Any others? Was it a motion?
You have a comment? You have a comment, Commissioner Johnson? Okay. Yeah, I think staff's recommendation and outline has been pretty clear.
Just for, I'll bring it up. I think, you know, there's commentary in the staff's recommendation about size, the combination of size and proud of the house. And I think that, given the applicant's analysis, we've, asking for both seems more than meets the guidelines. I think the house, the clip of the Sanborn, not the Sanborn map, but the clip of when you look at, it looks like it's like jammed over to one side, but I think as the staff analyzed and when you look at the site plan, the existing house sort of sits right in the middle of the lot. And so I'm not compelled by anything that was presented here today to approve a two-story addition that's both proud of the house and then, you know, in terms of analyzing the scale. So I don't disagree with the staff's recommendation in that regard either. And so in terms of providing some guidance to the applicant, in having something designed that meets their needs and fits within the guidelines, I think certainly, the combination of those two things is really what, for me, I don't want to speak for the other commissioners, but for me, the combination of those two things is where I'm stumbling to.
If I could interrupt you for just a second. It sounded like there was a motion, or was that not a motion? Okay, never mind then.
I'll also add that I love American four-square homes. It's a beautiful house. It looks like applicant's already, oh no, here he is. And we routinely approve additions to this type of house that do everything that you'll need for your family and provide enough space. It's just, in this case, this is not something that we, that we take pretty seriously, the size limits that are put in place through the design guidelines. So I think if you continue to work with the staff and work within the design guidelines, you can still have a great outcome for your family's home. It's just, this one's just too big of an ask for right now. So with that, I will move to, in the case of 1704 Cedar Lane, to adopt the staff disapproval of the proposed addition.
There is a motion?
Second.
There's a second? By who in a second? Commissioner Johnson, second? All in favor? None opposed? Just one comment from the chair, is that, you know, again, when we look at infills, we're also looking to see how, in the context of the historical structure. So this particular one is not really subordinate to the historic structure. So I think that's also just another comment to the applicant. We do appreciate the well-done plans, and as Commissioner has said, just continue to work with staff.
Next up is 3707 Westbrook Avenue. The commission did receive quite a bit of public comment, and that was all put in the folder and all forwarded on to the commissioners as soon as we received them. So 3707 Westbrook is a circa 1910 Craftsman bungalow that contributes to the historic character of the Richland West End Neighborhood Conservation Zoning Overlay. In 2013, MHCC approved a ridge raise and a rear dormer to the house. Just a quick note that the, there was a typo in the staff recommendation that said that we approved it in 2023, but it was actually 10 years ago, in 2013. This lot is unusually short, at 90 feet on the west side and 104 feet on the east side. And again, just another note that the Metro Maps dimensions do not match up with what their survey shows. Typically, surveys are more accurate or should be accurate compared to Metro Maps. So even though it says this is 107 feet on the screen, their survey is showing 104 feet deep. 3707's lot is the shallowest in, on this block, among the shallowest in the historic district. And so here's just an aerial view of the house and its lot. Here are the existing and the proposed site plans. MHCC approved the detached carport in 2002, and the applicant is proposing to keep that. And the applicant is also proposing a rear and side addition. Here's the proposed floor plan. I'm going to first discuss the side addition to the addition, or to the house. The design guidelines allow for side additions when a lot is 60 feet wide or wider. The applicant's survey shows that the lot is 50 feet wide at the front and approximately 58 feet, 3 inches wide at the rear. Where the side addition would be located, the lot's widths range from 53 feet to 55 feet. Staff finds that a side addition is appropriate in this instance, even though the lot is not quite a full 60 feet wide, because of the shallowness of the lot and the constraints of adding on to the rear of the house. Moreover, staff finds that the side addition to be appropriate because its height, scale, roof form, and overall design meet the design guidelines for side additions. The addition is located behind the midpoint of the house, stops approximately one foot, it stops approximately one foot from the back corner of the house, and it does not wrap that rear corner. It is meeting the five-foot setback. So the side addition does not require a setback determination, it is meeting the base zoning setback of five feet. Also, the side addition is just one story in scale and is approximately six feet lower in height than the historic house. It has a width of approximately 14 feet, which is less than one-half the width of the house, and that is a design guideline that states that the, can't be any wider than one-half the width of the house. Lastly, the side addition has a gable form, per the design guidelines. The side addition does shorten the existing driveway. There is no alley behind the slot, so the driveway is the only vehicular access to the lot. The construction of the side addition will mean that the driveway will be shortened from extending right now to about the rear of the house to extending to about the midpoint of the house. The carport in the rear, which again, we approved in 2002, is proposed to remain, although is not currently being used as a carport. Staff finds that the shortened driveway to meet the design guidelines and historic context, since the driveway will extend to at least the midpoint of the house, and the driveway is located to the side of the house, not in front of it. The side addition has a footprint of approximately 280 square feet, and the proposed rear addition has a footprint of approximately 300 square feet. Approximately 100 square feet of the rear addition does not meet the rear base zoning setback of 20 feet. The applicant proposes a setback of as little as 10 feet at the closest corner, but because of the slant of the lots, the other corner is approximately 13 feet from the rear property line. MHCC has the ability to determine setbacks based on historic precedents. Typically, MHCC would follow the 20-foot rear setback of bulk zoning. However, staff finds the proposed rear setback and setback determination to meet the design guidelines for several reasons. First, the lot is unusually shallow. It's just 104 feet deep on the east side and 90 feet deep on the west side, according to the applicant's survey. It is the shallowest lot on this block and is one of the shallowest lots in the overlay. Also, the addition is modestly scaled. The rear portion of the addition that extends it to the setback is just one story in height and 12 feet wide. The commission has supported setback determinations in similar situations on similar lots. The commission has supported setback determinations in similar situations on similar lots. It's just, um, here are some more elevation drawings. Here is the right side elevation, which shows both the side addition and the rear addition. Here is the left elevation showing the rear addition. Um, staff also found that the known materials, finished station pattern, roof form and overall design to meet the design guidelines. So in conclusion, staff recommends with the condition that staff approve the masonry sample, all windows and doors, and the roof shingle color, and the location of the HVAC and utilities. Staff recommends approval of the addition and setback determination, finding that the project meets the design guidelines for the Richland West End Neighborhood Conservation zoning overlay.
Thank you, Melissa. Any questions to her at the moment? Okay. See applicant here?
A few handouts for you all. Hello there, um, my name's Clayton Williams. My wife Katie and I are the owners of three-seven zero seven Westbrook Avenue. Um, we bought the home in March of twenty-twenty-two, but have lived in the area for the past four years. Um, we were drawn to the Richland, Richland West End Neighborhood because of the historic homes, the mature landscaping, neighborhood events and sidewalks. When we bought the home, we knew a renovation would be needed in, in order to accommodate our future family. Before making an offer on the house, we were in contact with Melissa, provided guidance to us on the types of renovations that would be allowed in the neighborhood. Katie and I thought it would be best to live in the home prior to completing a renovation. We wanted to have a better undershading of what really needed to be completed. Over the past ten months, we've debated the appropriate renovation and have had numerous ideas. The addition that we are presenting to you today have the three following goals in mind. First, retain the historic aesthetic and floor plan. You're probably wondering why we have two separate additions and not just one large addition on the back of the house. The reason for this is that we, we want to keep the original layout of this historic home. The layout is generally the same, except we're moving a six-foot wall in the kitchen area. This is unlike many renovations in the Richland West End Neighborhood. They retain the, only the front and side exterior walls. Our plan will allow the home to maintain its historic charm, not just only on the outside, but on the inside as well. Our, our plan would be to, um, keep the original windows, doors, crown molding, and hopefully flooring to maintain its historic aesthetic. Second, we'd like to create additional living space for a growing family. We bought the home with the intention of raising a family in the house. We plan to have multiple children, so only having two bedrooms will eventually become a problem for us. Moving the master back, bath, bathroom, sorry, moving the master bedroom back downstairs and adding a new bathroom onto the back of the house will allow us enough space for a growing family. In addition, the home lacks a laundry room, pantry and formal dining room. The side addition allows, will include these features, which is much needed to have a functional house. And third, fix the deferred maintenance. There are several items in the house that need to be completed in order to maintain the structural integrity and look of the home. Most of these items have been overlooked for years and need to be dealt with if the home is going to last another hundred and ten years. Some of these major items include foundational work, electrical updates and replacing exterior siding. Past owners have only completed cheap and inadequate repairs and have only band-aided the issues. If the additions are approved, we intend to correct these problems correctly, since the home would be able to accommodate our family for many years. As I mentioned earlier, we have been working with Melissa since February of twenty-twenty-two before we made an offer on the home. We wanted to ensure that the type of renovation that was needed followed the guidelines of the Richland West End Neighborhood. As Melissa mentioned earlier, our proposed renovation meets all these design guidelines as outlined by the Richland West End Conservation Zoning Document. I understand there are people in the neighborhood that do not agree with the addition meeting the design guidelines. Many of these folks have sent emails outlining why the addition doesn't meet the guidelines, but they have failed to include prudent language in the document that only highlights sections that support their argument. I like to outline these points. First, the rear setback. The rear setback that we were requesting determination on would allow us to build on the back of the home between ten to thirteen feet from the rear property line. The atypical lot size and shape allows us to go beyond the twenty-foot setback per the Richland West End Design Guidelines. By example, similar setback determinations have been approved in the past, which are shown in your, um, the document that I provided you. This is three-six oh one Richland Avenue, which has a three-foot setback from the rear property line. This was approved on January sixteenth, twenty-twenty-one, and three-seven zero four Princeton Avenue, which has a ten-foot setback from the back property line, which was approved on June fifteenth, twenty-twenty-two. Each of these lots have an atypical lot size and shape without alley access. Also, each of these received no public comment, according to the meeting minutes. Second is the side addition. Section two-point-two A of the Richland West End Design Guidelines states that generally an addition should be situated at the rear of the home, with the exception of a atypical lot size and shape or extreme grade change. Our lot size is about a tenth of an acre, which is materially smaller than most lots in the neighborhood, which generally average a quarter acre. In addition, we have one of the few lots without alley access, and the depth of the lot is shallower than the majority of the homes in the Richland West End Neighborhood. Section two-point-two A of the Richland West End Design Guidelines also states that side additions should, are allowed when a lot exceeds sixty feet in, in width or the standard width loft, or the standard lot width on the block. There are eight homes on our block, not including three-seven one-two Meadowbrook Avenue, which is a triangle lot to the west of our home. The eight homes on our block have irregular lot shapes, where in some cases the, the front or the rear could be larger than one another. When you average the, the widest width of each lot, and this is adjusting for our survey versus what's shown on that, on the Nashville, uh, Nashville Planning Department's website, um, the average lot width at the, at any of the widest point of the eight parcels on our block is fifty-seven point seven feet. The, our rear lot line is fifty-eight point three feet, thus making our lot width larger than the standard lot width on the block. In addition, two of the eight homes on the block have additions that extend further than the sides of the historic structure. Three-seven oh two Meadowbrook Avenue has an eight-hundred-square-foot addition, which was permitted on July twenty-seventh, two thousand and one, and three-seven oh one Westbrook Avenue has a five-hundred-and-twelve-foot addition that was permitted on August thirteenth, two thousand and ten. Other side addition guidelines state that side additions should be narrower than half the historic building width and exhibit a height of at least two feet shorter than the historic building, which ours does. And the, and the roofing, roofing forms should be generally be hip or side gable, which ours does as well. The proposed side guidelines meets, meet all the design guidelines as outlined in the Richland West End Neighborhood Conservation Zoning Document. My final point is that the proposed, proposed renovation is much smaller in scale than most recent renovations within the Richland West End Neighborhood. The total amount of additional living space is approximately five-hundred-and-sixty square feet, which is about a thirty percent increase to the home's square footage. Many additions in the neighborhood that have been proved recently double the size of the historic home. What we're asking for is relatively small compared to what has been improved in the past. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions, commissioners? Okay, not yet? All right, we're going to open public hearing. Come forward, please.
Hello, my name is, um, Michael Linseth, and I live at thirty-five thirty-three Richland Avenue. Um, this is my seventh year as the neighborhood president. You okay? Thank you. I don't take that long. Um, um, this is my seventh year as the Richland West End Neighborhood Association President. Um, just a background, I mean, my wife and I have lived in our home for twelve years. Prior to that, we lived in, um, Hillsborough Village and then Cherokee Park, and we renovated those houses as well. Um, so I've lived in an historic neighborhood for about twenty-seven years, and actually my grandmother grew up on Richland, so kind of come full circle there. Um, during my due diligence stage, before closing on my house in Richland, I researched the rules and regulations of the overlay. Melissa and the historical zoning staff helped me immensely with the design construction phases, and they were great partners. Our house on Richland was nominated and won a Metro Preservation Award that we proudly display on our, on our home. I tell the commission this because I am passionate about preserving my neighborhood's historical character, along with my fellow neighbors who all have their own stories and their own history. Um, the founders of Richland West End Neighborhood Association worked tirelessly from the nineteen-seventies to, to get the association through the nineties to get the overlay, um, put in place. Um, they figuratively planted seeds to make Rowena the place that it is today. Um, I am hopeful a hundred years down the road that the NAB will maintain its historical character and integrity. Our neighborhood is very passionate about preservation. We hosting, we hosted a meeting last fall with Robin that, that presented information that educated us on new construction in the neighborhood, which was attended by over a hundred neighbors. We can't get that many for our annual, annual meeting. So it's, it's cool to see the passion of our neighborhood and our neighbors. Um, as, as I mentioned in my letter and exhibits, which, did you all look at the exhibits that we sent out? It didn't have a slide PowerPoint, so, okay. Um, asking you vote no for this application for thirty-seven oh seven Westbrook. If it, if it's okay, I'd like the neighbors in the crowd to raise their hands if they're opposed. Thank you. Um, also, we had, I guess, believe for the record, um, twenty letters. One was from our council lady Kathleen Murphy as well, that's in the record. Rowena is opposed to the setbacks and the pop-out addition. The pop-out addition affects the rhythm of the street on Westbrook and adversely affects the charm. There is no, there is no rear alley access, so the, the lesser of the setback, there's no, there's not additional buffer as well. Um, if approved, I'm worried that this could set a slippery slope, um, for other properties in the neighborhood. So we believe there should not be an exception on that. Thank you for your consideration.
We appreciate it. Thank you for your comments. Anyone else? Please feel free to come because you have waited till our end of the meeting.
My name is Julie Cavallo. I've lived at thirty-seven twenty Richland Avenue for twenty-seven years. Five years after buying our home, family-growing pains necessitated in addition to our nineteen-twenty bungalow. During this time, we discovered our house no longer had a foundation and was in a state of collapse. Our only choice was complete demolition, the first in our neighborhood to do so. Needless to say, we were under the watchful eye of Metro Historic Zoning Commission for the entirety of our new construction. We had a blank slate. We wanted more square footage than just a back addition, so desired a pop-out to the side. We were denied. We wanted to eliminate the outdated and never-used Porte-Cachere next to our covered porch. We were denied. We wanted to increase the pitch of the front shed dormer. We were denied. Bottom line, we were given permission to reconstruct exactly the same house that had been there. We were told the facade of the new home had to be unchanged from the original home. We were told the integrity of our new home had to blend with the integrity of the historic homes surrounding us. We were told precedent mattered. We did not question nor challenge these decisions by staff. We painstakingly followed all the rules. I've recently heard a historic zoning administrator tell our neighborhood that nothing has changed in regards to our conservation zoning. I would maintain just saying those words doesn't make it true. I am confounded that these plans are moving forward with staff approval. Similar requests were not allowed for us twenty-seven years ago. Something has changed. When you make exceptions, you loosen the foundation of the desired result. We continue to attempt to preserve the special character of our neighborhood. Why aren't we, my neighborhood and your staff striving to do the same thing? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? So I have a question for the, uh, people here. Is there anyone that was for this? Okay. Duly noted.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Thank you for your time. My name is Karen Schneider, and I live at thirty-seven oh five Westbrook Avenue in the historic Richland West End Neighborhood. I live next door to the applicants and have lived in the neighborhood in this home for twenty-two years. I oppose the rear setback encroachment of the primary structure because the lot is small, zero-point-one-three acres, and building beyond its scale is unacceptable, in my opinion. Typically, the MHCC would follow the twenty-foot required setback of bulk zoning, and I ask that you continue to do so here for real safety and accessibility concerns, as well as the massing is too large. According to MHCC, it is the shallowest lot on the block and one of the shallowest lots in the overlay. A large part of MS, MHCC's determination for approval that the lot is small and irregular is exactly my argument against this proposal. The proposed encroachment would have the primary structure consuming nearly three-quarters of the backyard on the east side property line, surpassing even my outbuilding's footprint at front, even my outbuilding's footprint at front, by six feet more or less. Setbacks are established to contain size and protect surrounding neighbors. I oppose the side addition pop-out because this lot is fifty feet at the front. According to Historical's explanation, they only consider a side pop-out when the front is sixty feet or greater. For this reason and more, I oppose. Permitting these proposed rear and side additions would be a direct affront to stable zoning. It is my sincere hope that the commission will take into consideration all that has been said today, as well as the fact that our district councilperson Kathleen Murphy, the zoning and executive committees of our neighborhood board, and a significant number of neighbors have submitted their opposition. I ask that you disapprove this application. Thank you again for your time and consideration. We greatly appreciate the work you do. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Schneider. Anyone else? Before I close public hearing? Okay, we're going to close public hearing. Thank you. Staff, can you put on screen, I think it's page two on our packet, but it's where it shows the site plans and the rhythm of the street? That, thank you. Of course, Commissioner, you can ask for another diagram as well.
I'll go ahead and start. Uh, thank you, everybody, for being here. I get, this is a tough one for us. We, this is, uh, it's, it's often very difficult to, applicants and the public think that we can always apply the same guidelines for every case, but it's often tricky. Precedents, um, sometimes do change over time, uh, given natures of lot, of, of lots and property sizes and setbacks and all of the stuff that we're talking about today. Uh, that said, um, this is an exceptionally small lot, and I am, um, often open to setback determinations when there's ru- room and not already crowding going on, on, for, for a particular lot or in a particular part of a neighborhood. When there is alley access and space between, between properties, I'm open to, um, setback determinations of the type that we're being asked today, especially along rear and side, side property lines. But I am more persuaded in this case by concerns of the neighbors and the Neighborhood Association and council member altogether in a united, um, opposition to the application. Uh, I understand the applicant's wants and needs for a growing family. Um, I would be willing to entertain another application for a, a rear addition that encroached slightly on the twenty-foot setback, not quite as much as this one does. Uh, but that's not what we have before us, um, and I don't think I can support the applicant's request, uh, based on concerns we've heard from neighbors and, and others that have been before us today.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Just wanna, uh, thank you for the neighbors come out, and we received a lot of letters, and we read every single of them, so understand, uh, where you're coming from. And at the same time, I would like to comment on the applicant. You did a great presentation. Uh, your research is thorough, so I do appreciate both sides. And like, you know, Commissioner Price said, we do have set, uh, standard, the design guideline. And every now and then, we do, uh, consider variance, because even though we do have a design guideline, each and individual lot is, uh, different, and some has slope and some has shallow setback and some had, you know, longer, uh, lot. Uh, so we do consider, uh, each application depending on the site specific. So in this case, uh, it's really unique lot, front is fifty foot and kind of not square, rectangle shape, so towards the rear of the property goes a little wider. So with that sense, uh, you know, the addition, uh, side addition is- So with that sense, you know, the addition, side addition is kind of placed towards the rear, so it's not, it's rather a little bit, you know, a longer part. And also, we did in the past, approved rear setback determination, like encroachment into the 20-foot setback. So with that, I understand where staff is coming from, because our body has authority to determine based on each and individual lot and parcel. So for that, I do understand a staff's opinion and appreciate that. Having said that, I do understand where the neighborhood at large, you know, many peoples coming from, especially in this neighborhood. Each and every single lot is, you know, different shape, but there are quite few lot, the frontage is less than 60 feet, you know, quite few lot, a frontage is 50 feet, and quite few lots, a longer lot, but there's some, you know, shorter lot. So with that, I think although we do have authority to grant variance, I am not really comfortable kind of overriding the guideline and wish and will from other neighbors who has been there quite long time and who has been there preserving a charming historical neighborhood character. So while I do understand applicants' needs and wants, and I do understand we did accept some side setback or some rear encroachment within the 20-foot setback. But I think in this case, I would like to encourage applicants and neighbor to, you know, especially neighborhood leaders who come up with a design guideline to more closely work and find amicable solution. I think it's getting there because applicant has been working with the staff, and then, you know, proposal is quite minimal, but at the same time, because of the unique lot, so it can go like a both-way, because but a unique lot, encroaching rear setback is a bit too close to the existing neighbors. So I think there's a little bit more room to kind of work about the design. So if I have to choose today to make a decision, I have to override staff recommendation, but I'm hoping, you know, we can find some amicable solution with existing neighbors and newcoming neighbors.
Thank you, Commissioner.
This was, this is unique to say, state the obvious, because I look at the figure ground of this triangular, generally triangular-shaped lot bound by Craighead and the two streets on the other side. You know, you've got a 30-foot wide lot that's a single-story home that has its own limitations, and this lot, I think the applicant has pointed out how it's different. The fact that it's adjacent to the, to the lot, the triangular-shaped lot next door and in terms of encroachment there, I'm less bothered by that, and so I'll get straight to the point. The side setback to me, meeting the minimum five-foot setback, is appropriately scaled and seems an appropriate solution in this situation, and I am compelled by arguments of equity, despite neighbors' objections to the side setback. I think the combination of that and the rear setback, I'm seeing a little bit more like some of my Commissioners. I think both are reasonable one-story additions that are in keeping with the guidelines. The other point that I'll make in terms of how I would analyze this and certainly in some agreement with the staff, the rear setback, what I'm about to say, applies in general to density, and there's some nuance to anybody's interpretation of this. A rear setback, typically zoning is, or not typically zoning, is about, you know, following the rules for access to light and air. I find the rear setback, 20-foot rear setback, in this case, a specious argument based on looking at what's happening to all the houses, nearly without exception, within this triangular shape. There are outbuildings and garages that are within a smaller distance, including on this site, that are adjacent to rear setbacks. And that's how, that's why I find the rear setback argument, it's a little less convincing to me in terms of the total analysis of this application, and I've already spoken on the side setback, given its proximity and the specific nature of it with the triangular, the location of the neighboring house, I don't know the address, but the neighboring house that faces the triangular corner, I find it to be appropriately scaled, and I'm in agreement with the staff's analysis there.
Thank you, Commissioner. I think it's good for public hearing to hear how we process because it is difficult when we look at, our purview is design guidelines, and another applicant has pointed out the guidelines of the neighborhood, and the neighborhood has created these guidelines, so that's our purview. And it is difficult, and we do make these concessions, if you might say, because each lot and each project is specific. And so to have an overall view to say this is what happens to every lot is normally not how this commission views projects. So to give, you know, variance to, you know, reasonable logic, considering our guidelines. I hear all the Commissioners, and I too give pause and compel because I don't think we've had as many opposition to such a reasonable project. You know, usually we'll get pushback on large expansions. Let me say that again. We usually get the pushback on large expansions, and in my observation of this, it's not a large expansion. So I'm listening to the Commissioners, and I think we have, you know, varied opinions here. But again, I don't think we've made our decision yet, but Commissioner Mayhull, do you have any comments?
You know, I tend to agree with Commissioner Mosley's determination that this is a special case and that it's a very reasonable addition, and so if I were to make a motion, I think, you know, we would be, you know, probably 2-2, and you'd have to make the decision.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And so, does anybody have any further comments on this?
Not yet. Thank you. Are we?
Just thinking out loud, you know, when we had those discussions, that was like a rooftop addition with the corner of Belmont, and what would be the appropriate guideline for that rooftop? Because we did face rather difficult decision, because back then, you know, the rooftop guideline was not crystal clear, so we encouraged the homeowners association and neighbors to come up with appropriate guideline. And I don't believe this Richland, you know, Neighborhood Association president is saying there's no addition shall be allowed, you know, unless you have to have every single guideline to follow precisely. Therefore, no sideline if the front lot is, you know, less than 50. So they're not saying for us to not to take a look at uniquely different lot or parcel. But at the same time, you know, the opposition is clear, so I would love to hear, like, you know, if applicant is willing to defer and think with a guideline, with the person who were approved, walked on the guideline, to see, because applicant's view is valid, because we are not creating precedent. We did in previously, in that neighborhood conservation overlay, we approved side addition, we approved rear setback. So what is the difference? Why this presumably small addition is why, you know, creating such a, yes, so that's other concern, because we do, as a commissioner, have authority to grant those variants, but by doing so, are we destroying every single wish of the neighborhood? So that's what I am not clearly conveyed by, you know, either, because, like I said, guideline was created by the group of the people, and we are the one to guard and follow those guidelines. And take a look at the individual parcel and property occasionally we grant, and by doing so, we cannot make every single person, you know, happy, but we try our best to preserve and accommodate and create cohesive and harmonious neighborhood, especially within that guideline in that, you know, zoning overlay. So with that saying, because I see both side, so I'm not sure if this proposed design, I'm not, you know, approve at this, at this time.
Commissioner, I'm going to go to Legal on this. If we are sensing that we are doing 2 and 2, and we have to have four concurring votes, even if I make a vote to the either, it's going to be 3 and 2, which means?
So you are correct. Under your rules, you need four concurring votes to come to any resolution on a matter before you, so you'll need four votes. So if you have 2 and 2, even if you, even if you break that tie either way, it's still not enough votes.
Right. So what happens?
So you can continue discussion.
Or?
Or if you don't come to resolution on this matter, then, you could tell me what the timeline is here, but it would, I believe, by default be approved.
We have to have, or the application?
I just want to be clear. Just want to be clear.
And if I could address the design guideline issue, we have been talking to the neighborhood about the possibility of revising their guidelines, but that is a process that could probably take about a year. It's, you know, a lot of back and forth. We laid out a suggestion of maybe working with a committee to begin with, and then it would need to have community meetings with the whole neighborhood before it even came to you for adoption. So I understand what you're saying about the other project, but I think they're a little different. That one was, there was a guideline, it was a height issue, but there were multiple owners because it was condominiums, and so we were trying to come up with some kind of solution that would be the same for everybody, which is a little different than a revision to the design guideline. But I think they are interested in that. I just don't know that that's a solution for today.
Okay. So if you, David, go ahead.
I'll just share a few more thoughts as we continue to deliberate. I'd like to draw parallels to the previous cases we've seen a lot where somebody buys a one-story house and wants to put a two-story addition on it. And it's been said by myself and other Commissioners before, it's like, well, I understand you need that, you think you need that space, but you bought a one-story house, and the guidelines don't allow that. So it is what it, I hate the phrase, "it is what it is," but that's kind of, I think everybody understands what I mean there. In this case, it's a small lot, and it is, it was, the buyers, the applicants knew it was a small lot going into it, and I, I understand the need and desire for additional space. I think that there is still a workable design solution on the rear of the house, and to my ears and reading, most of the neighborhood opposition is more to the side addition here than, because of the lot width, according to guidelines, it's not 60 feet, and that 60-foot minimum for front, lot frontage, the Neighborhood Association wants to maintain. So I think whatever kind of, whatever addition does get approved here, it's going to need to be, continue to be minimal, just based on the small size of the lot being what it is, and pushed to the rear. Again, like I said, I think there's a solution that I would be willing to look at that would encroach somewhat on the 20-foot setback, but maybe not quite as far as being proposed here. So I'm just talking out loud. I don't know if anybody wants to say anything else, if we're getting any closer or if I'm making any sense.
So my question is, because, you know, like I said, applicant did great job with this presentation. I understand in the past, we approved side addition, but one thing I'm not clear at that time is, is that house we approved the side addition, is it a 50-foot front? So if it's that, you know, by approving this, are we creating all the 50-foot side addition?
Commissioner, we've said that too. I just want to always support that, but that we do look at things specific, so when we compare it to another project, it's sort of iffy. You can't compare it to another project that we approved or disapproved because it's site-specific. I'm not leaving you out.
I think it would be too much in this meeting to bring up what were the details of those cases? Why did we make that decision? It could have been for this or that that's not being considered right now, and that's why it's tricky to, for people to claim precedent because we don't exact, there might have been something in the public discussion or something that led us to that decision that doesn't apply in this case. And we might have gotten it wrong.
Right, Commissioner. You know, and I also look at this rhythm and spacing of this, of this road, and I think that's probably part of where we go, and it's quite unique. I mean, and there's quite variance there. There are some, the 60-foot has a bump out, and there's bump outs in the other properties, so that's not unusual. That's not unusual.
One last thing that has crossed my mind is our legitimacy as a body and of the staff. And when we're faced with councilperson opposition and overwhelming Neighborhood Association and neighbor opposition, we should really think very hard before we go against that. Because it, we don't, we don't want to be seen as some kind of rogue, as a rogue body.
And that definitely is our...
Especially when there are options, there is a solution here somewhere. That's just not the current application.
Okay. I just wanted, I just also wanted to point out that if you, if there were a mutual agreement to defer this to another meeting, and there are additional Commissioners here, that's another option to see if you could get there, because that four votes.
But the applicant would need to...
The applicant would have to defer.
Yeah, the applicant would have to agree.
The commission cannot defer. It would be the applicant to defer.
Correct.
I'm looking to the applicant. If you, if you shake your head, we will take that.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Just as an additional commentary to that, for those who went to the...
For those who went to the trouble to be here?
Right.
And would have to attend again and to the applicant, I think we, we owe the gallery at least a motion before we decide we can't come to agreement.
Duly noted. Because as we see this, if it's clearly on protocol, when you have, you know, two and two and one breaks, we still don't have, you know, unless we're convinced, unless one of you is more convinced to go the other way, we have to have four concurring votes. We have to have before concurring votes. And that includes me, but I don't, you know. So I know Commissioner Price, you are, I'm compelled by, by your comments because there's always room to grow. There, there's always room to redo. I know, but the, the fair side of it is that the applicant has also invested time and money to their project with the staff and with their whoever contractor. You know, I think we should look at both sides and that is what makes it difficult. It has to be equitable as well.
With that, we'll, we'll go there and I'll make a motion on, with respect to 3707 Westbrook Avenue. I move for disapproval of the applicant, application.
Okay, there is a motion. If there's a second, please raise your hand. Okay, that motion does not pass. So will somebody else make a motion? Or we're not ready to make the motion? Okay?
With respect to 3707 Westbrook Avenue, I recommend that we adopt the staff recommendations.
Those for that motion, please raise your hand.
I'm sorry, we'll need a second for that.
I mean, second. Sorry, sorry. Second. Okay? That motion fails as well.
Mic on, sorry. Made a good point earlier about buying, you know, one-story house and wanting a two-story addition or having some constraints. And again, I think the applicant has, this one's hard to say no to because of, of the appropriateness of the scale and the fact that it, it is in keeping with the majority of written guidelines, certainly not all of them. And there is vociferous opposition to this application. Duly noted. And I, I look, you know, when we were, we were looking at the overhead, you know, there's, there's a lot around the corner that is, just as you describe, a single story, 30-foot, it's, it's the anomaly on the block. It's only 30 feet wide. It meets the setbacks essentially. I'm guessing it would be a shotgun house, which certainly doesn't, isn't in keeping with, just purely by its width and nature with, with the rest of the homes and would, we would, I'm sure the staff, anybody who designed, you know, a house on that lot would, would take that into account and, and have to deal with it, you know, deal with the constraints that exist therein. So I'm, I think you make a good point in, in terms of how we've taken the totality of, of, of the application and the, and the guidelines and some things just, you, you just can't get there in, in certain cases. So I appreciate that commentary.
Don't take us anywhere closer.
So since we are still discussing, I, Commissioner Price's comment about buying the house, you know, one-story house and then tried to put two-story addition. So with that applied to this, I mean, this applicant has been working with our staff before the purchase and tried to understand a design guideline and tried to understand sometimes a design guideline is not strict based on the lot size and topography or whatever unique to individual lot size, they can, or our body has room to grant a variant. So although I am very, very uncomfortable why this small, presumably small addition with this unique lot has so much, created so much opposition, but considering overall guideline fairness to neighborhood as well as applicant, I am more leaning towards utilizing our bodies' unique ability to grant variance. Because I do have concern, but like Commissioner Mosley said, there is already detached structure sitting close to the property line. And this addition is not encroaching towards that back of the property line. And when we do consider rear setback, our major concern was safety towards alley. And for better or worse, this case does not have alley. And so it does not have any safety concern to the driver or the car. So for that sense, I feel a little better about granting encroachment to the, within the rear setback. And besides, 10 feet is the minimum setback where we have to consider the safety distance with alley. And all other condition and design, they, this design meet mass scale proportion. So ask is very reasonable. One thing I really don't understand is why this presumably seeming addition is creating that much, yeah, concern with the neighbors. But understanding with this unique lot and situation, after our, you know, group discussion, I am swayed by to moving forward towards a staff recommendation.
Again, we duly note that the neighborhood association president has come and spoken and has said his outline of the opposition. And we, we can appreciate that. I think this is where, again, I, I, I'm with you, Commissioner Johnson, where, you know, we, we've come on so many projects where they want to create larger expansion. And are we, you know, is this applicant going to ask us for something else? You know, for a two, two, you know, story? But, you know, setting precedence, we have enough confidence in this board that we are so logical in terms of how we gauge a project that is not setting precedence. And if we come near that line, we, we don't do it. We just don't do it. We may make some mistakes, we're, you know, to err is human. We do our best. And I think the public can hear the way we are debating now and how we want to be equitable on both sides. You know, sometimes when we hear public comment, and mostly it's about whether we're going to recommend a overlay. And that's where the community comes and says, we don't want it or we want it. And that's really where I've seen over my years to where a council member will come and say, you know what, this is not working for my constituents. And rather would be, where I would be compelled is if the opposition would say the guideline in two-point A, B, or whatever is not being followed. There has been, and I want to say that you have because of the 50 and 60. But again, this board has the, lack of better terms, but we have that authority to, to give some, some leeway on, you know, projects. So I think that's kind of where I too have some pause because of such opposition from the neighbors. And again, that is, I think there are several of us that are questioning that in terms of how they're pushing on, you know, this particular instance. And Commissioner Price, you, you have commented on that, that that is really because the council member and because you've got 20 people here and more people that have, you know, opposition. And, and it's hard for us. It's hard for us. This is your neighborhood. And if it was my neighborhood, you know, I would be compelled to speak as well. But again, I, I don't think we're going to set any precedence either way because again, for other future projects, this board is very logical and will follow our purview. And so we can try to vote again, we can try to see what happens here and protocol will follow. If legal will direct us, if we haven't done the right thing, then you will let us know. Okay. So does someone have a, a new motion? I'm, I'm hearing compelled comments, so.
I will give it a try.
Okay.
With 1307 Westbrook Avenue, I make motion to accept staff recommendation to approve the application with the condition.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second. There's a first and there's a second. All in favor of the motion, raise your hand. So we have three for the motion. And is there opposition? There is one opposition. So there's three. We will need four concurring. The chair is going to make the concurring vote. Because my confidence in this board is that we will have, you know, we have, we have done our deliberation, our purview is that we have done the design guidelines, the staff recommendation is, has been spot-on, and also that we can make these leniencies in rare cases in this particular instance. And I don't, because the majority of this board has said they would like to go for this and, and, and be recommended by, and recommend by the staff recommendation, this is the staff, the chair will vote for the motion. So we have four concurring votes and we have one opposition. I believe that is it. And we voted on, so we, we're good. All right.
You're good.
All right. Applicant, you've been approved. Neighborhood Association, we thank you for you coming here and we do our best. And you've heard our, you've heard our debates. So we, we appreciate you being here and thank you.
Next up is a revision to the abatement program. And I won't go into all the details unless you want me to, but it's just some basic administrative changes to the process and how it's going to work. Nothing's a real major change. Nothing changes the two projects, none of these changes change anything for the two projects you've already approved. So we just recommend approval of those. And they have all been asked for and agreed to by the trustee's office and the property assessor's office.
And council as well, right, Rodan?
Council approves the program, it's, but the management of it is fully up to you. But obviously, we've been working a lot with the trustee and the property assessor.
Okay. So that doesn't go back to council for any approvals? This is just our process?
Right.
Okay?
Right. So staff recommends approval.
Okay. We don't have to have public comment on that or anything, do we? Do we have to open public hearing?
You can.
Okay. All right. We will open public hearing and close public hearing. And any questions to Rodan? Okay. Motion to approve? So moved. And there's a second by Commissioner Johnson. All in favor?
No.
Okay. None opposed, so that motion passes. All right, thank you. And just for protocol, we are closing public meeting now and so that IT can also note that. And thank you so much.
This has been a service of the Metro Nashville Network. If you would like to see this presentation again or for more information on this and other programs, visit Nashville.gov.